Mr. Kelly.
I'm standing here.
Mr. Coles.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Here.
Ms. Paulsstein.
Here.
Ms. Robbins.
President.
And with that, we have a quorum. Please rise from the floor. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, is everyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Okay, before you have the meeting minutes from February 3rd, 2022, please refrain from them for any corrections or corrections. If you want to have any conversations about them. I mean, we had a pretty riveting village management report last time.
I have two corrections, actually. Three. Here, we sample. The first one on public comments on page three. I just wanted to correct the spelling of Mr. Doherty's name. It's D-A-U. So we correct that twice.
That's one.
And then, page five. Third paragraph down about the salt. It's, uh, the first one is sale instead of salt. So that's one correction. And then the last sentence is, Mr. Hedges responded, "We pay for it until we receive it," and that should be when we receive it. We always repay for it until we get it.
Okay, we have one new court for the meeting.
They're simple little things. That means we read them. That's it.
That's fantastic. Any other corrections? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval for the February 3rd minute.
So.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Clerk, can you call roll, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paulsstein.
Hi.
Ms. Robbins.
Ms. Adams.
Ms. Soder.
Hi.
So. Why do I respond on state?
So, next on our agenda, we just have some good news. I just want to share. There was a, uh, there's a lot of, uh, certain times within the village and there's some people with some views on either side of what's going on in the world today. And so we end up kind of in the center of things sometimes unintentionally. That's just kind of how it is when you're in the village, right? So we had some positive comments come in this week and I thought it was important to share them because we're highlighting some of the positive successes we've had in the village. So I asked the Ms. Clerk if she would read one email and then I would read the other one. We're gonna try to include some, like, I don't know, good news, if you will, in each one of these meetings to highlight some of our employee accomplishments and good ones.
Hello, Chief Thompson. I wanted to send words of thanks and gratitude to your way. We know that these times acts of kindness seem to be very hard to come by. Today Officer Davis made such a positive impact on our first grade class, the student in particular, here at G-DW. Yeah, I felt I needed to share a little backstory. This week Officer Davis has been at G-DW every morning during school arrival. A little friend was very scared and therefore had a difficult day yesterday due to the fact that a police officer was in the building. Even though many staff members have encouraged conversations that police officers are community helpers and keep us safe in these difficult times. This morning I asked Officer Davis if she could spare a minute to introduce herself to this particular student and she was very happy to do so. Not only did she make such a positive impact on the student, she now also made 20 new friends. I am beyond appreciative of that she took some time out of her busy day to make such a positive impact. I would guess that after Officer Davis' visit today, that the Hampshire Police Department might have some new recruits. Pass, please pass along, please pass along to Officer Davis how much it meant to myself, the classroom teacher, and the students.
Okay.
With sincere appreciation and thanks, Jennifer Reed, M-A-C-C-S-L-E-S-L, licensed speech.
So, so, um, yeah, she, yeah, I believe me. So anyway, so I also want to read another email about that particular situation. And please, this is something I'd like to do at every meeting if we can. So if there's something that you guys get from something like a community member or something, and you want to submit it for to read, you know, start positive notes or something like that, we should.
Okay.
Okay, so it says, "I just want to echo Jen's thoughts and words. Yesterday morning, one of my students had a rough time after seeing an officer at a door, at the door. He had so many negative worries which made it for a very difficult day. This morning he came in and the first thing he shared, the first thing he did was give the police officer a high five. And he was not scared anymore, similar to what Ms. Reed shared. We spent yesterday reviewing what we learned earlier in the year about police officers as community helpers and the tools that they use. Today was a completely different experience for not only one student but all of them. Officer Davis joined our class this morning, spent a few minutes talking to the students, introducing herself and telling them about the role as a police officer. She even let her, let them see her tools and ask great questions. When she asked how many wanted to be a police officer, more than half of the class raised their hand. It was too sweet. I am thankful my students were able to have this experience and that Officer Davis took the time, I imagine how busy you all are right now, to come and help calm the worries of a first grader. I know that that'll be a major topic of conversation for many dinner tables tonight. Thank you to Officer Davis for making this happen. It was truly appreciated. Catey Nitzel." So I just want to say thank you to you, Chief Thompson, and thank you to Officer Davis. I know that you guys have been very, very busy these last couple of weeks, but it's nice that you guys take time out of your day and.
Well, thank you for the recognition of this because it is important for me to go back and say, this is what happened and it's the little things that, that we build on in the community that may get, you know, an impact. So, very cool.
Thanks, Chief. Why were they, was the officer in the school?
Uh, during the last couple of weeks, we've had this mask debate. Some parents are just needed to know that we were there.
That's enough said. Thank you.
So again, if you guys have positive comments or thoughts that are shared by community members or other business owners and that kind of stuff, I'd like to start highlighting some of the good that we do around here. Not that, not that we don't on a regular basis, but I think it's important. We just take time for that. Okay, up next, we have an appointment. So we've had an open position on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a little bit of time now. And so Mr. Scott McBride is with us this evening. Um, we've connected him with Chairman Murat, who's also in attendance. And I would like to entertain the motion to appoint Mr. Scott McBride to the Planning and Zoning Commission. He serves, he has served with the Hampshire Fire Protection District for some time and is now on with Roseville Fire Department as well. And has significant experience with building codes and tire codes and that kind of stuff together. You said you were a fire inspector, correct?
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal for Roseville. So I think it'll be a fantastic addition to our planning and zoning commissions. And we have an open spot. He lives in town and he's invested. And so I think it's even more of a strength and a bond between us and some other government bodies. So with that, and actually, first of all, let's, this is, uh, if you have any questions for Mr. McBride, he's here, feel free to ask away. Otherwise, if you guys don't have any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Scott McBride to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I have one question for Chairman Murat.
Is it?
The term, is this because the term that's being billed ends at 2025?
Yes, because of the formation of the new commission, but he obviously has the schedule. So he's filling that current term remainder.
Perfect. All right, thank you. I'll make your motion. Second. Any other questions or comments for myself, Mr. Murat, or Mr. McBride? Okay, Ms. Coles, can you put the call on?
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paulsstein.
Hi.
Ms. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Soder.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Wish you success.
Fantastic. Mr. McBride, thank you for volunteering. Conducting the interview, thank you, Village Board. If you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to take an exit. Up to you. Uh, up next, we have proclamation for Engineers Week, which EDI asked that we include. Um, we've done enough reading tonight, so I will just thank the engineering firm EDI for what they do for the village. And just be aware that this week, February 20th through 26th, is to be National Engineers Week in the Village of Hampshire. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Hedges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with that, we would ask for a motion to approve payments for easement acquisitions for the Water System Connections project with a sum of $31,052.50. You have an extensive agenda supplement from Attorney Schuster. And you'll recall that the board authorized the village manager to negotiate these easements several months ago and they now have concluded. So I'll leave it to any questions you might have to ask.
Did you say the total was a damn?
Thirty-one thousand, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, it's off from what the, the agenda supplement is. That's why we just want to make sure we have the right.
The agenda supplement is correct.
Thirty thousand dollars for the easements and then, as included in those agreements, the village offered to reimburse legal fees incurred. Now it came to another thousand dollars, thousand and twenty dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hedges said one thousand and fifty-two dollars or thirty-one thousand fifty-two. That's why I just wanted to make sure.
The number on the agenda supplement should be correct.
Okay.
I'll play maybe. Um, it is, um, thousand and fifteen, thirty-two dollars. The agenda is correct. So, I don't remember in my left.
It's true, it's different.
Can we, uh, can we type, can we make a motion to have them pay the easement fee not to exceed thirty-one thousand one hundred dollars?
That's good.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? On this question, you call roll, please.
Mr. McBride.
Hi.
Ms. Paulsstein.
Hi.
Ms. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Soder.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Wish you success.
In the minutes, it says not to exceed
Yeah.
thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand one hundred dollars. Next, we're flying right through here. We have the January financial reports.
Okay. Um, you have, in front of you, the financials from January 2022. We are now in, um, currently in our 10th month of the fiscal year. Uh, this reports nine months, ending January 31st. Um, as always, my agenda supplement surrounds the operating funds, the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. I guess just to hit a few of the highlights, our revenues in the general fund are very strong, 14% over budget. Um, as I noted, uh, say, like, some music's kind of have that, uh, same swing, if you will, because of leveling the playing field. And, um, other taxes are much on par based on our budget. Um, the expenses that I've highlighted, um, as far as those looking odd, um, I have removed a couple of items, added a few items based on, um, the timing to make sure that, uh, we have things taken into consideration. One of the things that obviously stands out is admin capital outlay. We are, we are paid in full for the, um, monument sign at 72 and French Road now, um, that causes us to be way over budget. However, keep in mind that that sign, eleven thousand dollars and change, is being reimbursed in full by our insurance company. So. Um, and the sign has been erupted, as we talked about the last time. It was lovely and was done by the street department and no extra charge. Um, as far as the water and sewer funds, uh, their sales are, um, going along strongly, um, not off very far from our budget projections. And there are just a few expenses that, um, are out of line. The big one, uh, big ones being engineering, which we are spending more for precautional services, um, due to mandates, um, that we are required to do that were unplanned at this time. And then also, um, the big maintenance, uh, system, which included both the water main replacement on 72, um, down by Casey's, and then also, um, the water main replacement on Cameron Drive. So, um, if you have any questions about my agenda supplement or the, um, diving into the details on subsequent pages, please let me know.
Any questions for Ms. Lyons? Okay, Chief?
I have your instant report totals in front of you, pretty much a uneventful, other than our tickets and our traffic is up quite a bit. Um, market figures, I think, last month were 32, now we're up to 80-some. I have no idea why. People got lazy and decided to park, uh, again. We still have a lot of, uh, system in county. We still have our domestics are rather high. Other than a pretty, uh, typical month, unfortunately now we're dealing with school issues and, you know, some of that's kind of a distraction, if you will.
Any questions for Chief Thompson?
In conversations with other law enforcement agencies, are domestics trending higher throughout other communities as well? Another newspaper or speaking, things like that. It's not isolated.
No. It's, well, it's a lot of things.
Any other questions this evening?
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Paulson, you're up.
All right, thanks. I think my, uh, my camera's not working, but hopefully you can hear me. Uh, just the main thing I wanted to note, both the north-south connection water main and the State Street improvement projects are out to bid with bids due, uh, next week. The connection project on Tuesday and State Street on, State Street on Thursday. So we'll be bringing those back to you, uh, in March.
Any questions?
I do have one for the, um, streetscape. I know we can't open them yet, but do we have another bid that have come in?
Oh, we had a, uh, we had a pre-bid meeting on, uh, earlier this week, we had seven contractors who were at the pre-bid meeting. Um, but, you know, they won't turn in the bids until the, the deadline when they bring them to Village Hall. We open them at Village Hall.
If the seven are, had some interest to show up at that meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Hedges, for the streetscape, what's our deadline date again in order to be able to still use the grant funding? Is there like a date?
I'd say it's, uh, late 24. We have all this, I'm sorry, late 23. So we have all this year spent.
I thought it was April 2023. Is that, is that sound right?
Sometime in 23.
So we're not at risk?
As long as we get the, then this year we're fine. If it's delayed beyond this year, then we'll probably have to do something else.
Okay.
Get additional.
I had one more question.
Absolutely.
Um, for the loss metric, um, tricks, the punch lists, those are still on there. Are we making any headway with the punch lists to complete this project?
Uh, yeah, we had, uh, some very fruitful meetings with them this fall and they hired a contractor to take care of it and they've addressed almost all of the items, uh, with the exception, exception of a couple of restoration things they'll have to take care of in the spring. So after a couple of years of no activity from them, uh, they did commit to wrapping that up, uh, this fall, they've got just about everything done. So later this spring, uh, we'll be coming, they'll be coming forward for acceptance of those improvements.
Okay, nice.
And one question, um, on the D-300 elementary school, you mentioned crossing plans, the middle forthcoming. When might those be forthcoming? We have a.
I, I don't know. We had a, a meeting a month or so ago and they were following up with K-Dat and I, so I think they're pretty imminent as far as middle on those, uh, plans.
I can speak, really, I can speak to what is planned, if you'd like to know that. If you're asking.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we had a conference, I'm sorry.
That's what I was gonna ask, is when we left the original meeting, it was stated that there would be no crossing or did based on traffic studies, correct?
What was stated at the time is there would be no stoplight, no traffic light. That's what they said during the public hearings.
Okay.
So what we've been doing now the last few months, uh, we've had two meetings now with District 300 and with, uh, the committee EDI and, uh, and with Crom. And what's now been approved by Kane County, which is great, is that we will have a school, uh, school speed zone. It'll come down to 25 miles per hour.
Yeah.
We will have a full crosswalk. We'll have a flasher at the crosswalk in both directions and then abruptly, I think it's about 300 yards in each direction, we'll have another flasher leading up to the, uh, crosswalk. So we'll be two flashes in each direction. And there will be, now, just the latest thing that they've just approved last week was we'll now have a decreasing speed zone before we get to the school zone. So it'll go for, I think it's 50 miles per hour in September and drop down to either 45 or 40 and eventually then down to 25. So I think we've really, I think Kane County has been very, um, helpful in approving all that. District 300 is very pleased with the crossing as it's planned. So I think we're, I think we're in much better shape than we thought we would be a year ago.
Now we'll have to snap a new crossing guard, correct?
They have requested a crossing guard for one hour per day, which is gonna be really hard to fill.
One hour?
Yeah, I think one hour in the morning, one hour at night is what they ask for. And that's kind of hard to find somebody for that. So ideally, we will have a crossing guard that's yet to be approved.
If any of your trustees get after time when high school gets out, go sit over at the lake with the crossing and just watch. It's amazing. Amazing.
Yeah, you want to see how fast they can go.
The amount of traffic.
Will there be clear signings that, if, um, I don't know the words I'm looking for, it's, the law, is you stop when that light is flashing?
Yeah, I mean,
Is that?
I would say that, actually, we requested a lot more than we thought we would get from Kane County.
Okay.
And Crom was willing to do anything that they would approve, short of an, of an overpass, which was
Right, right.
Um, and that the one thing they would not approve was a stoplight because it doesn't warrant that, uh, due to the traffic. Yes, they've been, I think they've been very generous in their approval process and it is everything we asked for.
And if you think about it, I mean, it's gonna be a better, so, better setup than what's on State Street because we don't have the flashing beacon at the middle school. No, and, and the reason I ask is just because of what Mr. Coles was just saying. It's, that's, that's an event there.
I think what we're gonna find is people are gonna look for a way around that intersection, around that school. They'll have to find other ways to go. Probably more traffic up Ridenham Road, uh, would be my guess before we get to the school zone. Because it's gonna step back up with, when, when that's, when that school zone is in operation, the traffic is in the back up, especially in the afternoons, I think, when school lets out. But I think we have a really good, safe intersection. Now, it's a question of how the traffic, we, we ask.
I think maybe we have a safe, just my personal thing, I think we might have a safe intersection if we have a crossing guard official there, but having kids cross those flashing lights by themselves doesn't give me necessarily confidence. So teenage drivers going through there. Not, nothing against teenage drivers, but if they miss a sign and they don't slow down or it's a new area and somebody accidentally misses it.
You know, we take a point. Well, we're starting, as I would tell you, that we'll definitely have police up there when school starts by fall, monitor what happens the first few weeks.
I mean, and to, I agree with you, what you're saying. Okay, to have the staff there is important and, and I, I agree with you. I'm not discounting that. But I will say that in my time working for the district and seeing all the different schools, not every school has a crossing guard. And there's very similar situations in other communities that are probably more dangerous than what's, what is proposed to be up there. Again, I don't, they're not, they're not, it's not a, not on their board, right? And so I don't, I'm not speaking for them. But I'm just saying, like, there's some, you know, significant area, like, like, is it an example of Liberty Elementary School where you have to cross over Huntley Road? And there's no.
They have a light.
There's a, there's a, there's a light there, but not on Miller. There's not, not where they cross by the, not where they cross by the playground.
Cross by the playground there. That's where my kid went to school for six years. They don't, they cross there, they cross, like, no, like the, um, stop sign at Sleeping Hollow.
But that's what I, that's what I'm speaking.
Residential speed, 25 miles per hour.
But that's what this will be.
Not my way.
But no, but that's what this will be.
Well, but you have a, or a lane, you know, you've got a, a large space that where people are used to driving very fast.
They'll learn really quickly that they can't when the police are out there writing them.
I was gonna say this.
With this change in the allowance from Kane County, is the school still committed to busing the students? Because originally they were going to be busing from Lakewood across the street.
No, that's why the school district approved that. Well, it's exactly how many states, I can't remember the number. I want to say 65, maybe. I think there's 65 students in Lakewood will go to that grade school. And those kids will all be, they will not have bus transportation. That's why the school is so anxious to have a crosswalk. Was that what they agreed to when we were in here?
No.
They did, they mentioned busing. They did mention busing, but they didn't commit to busing.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Can I have a, uh, motion to approve the February 17th, 2022 accounts payable to personnel for $40? Four. Questions and comments? Ms. Clerk?
Ms. Paulsstein, hi. Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Soder?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coles?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Wish you success. Six years.
Okay, up next, we have the big one. So I won't entertain a motion to get started. Do you, anyone have any questions about the accounts payable and presented?
I just had a comment. Um, I see on page 37 that we have the facade program reimbursement, or Mr. I mentioned, and I just wanted to say how great it looks now that it's done. So I'm really thankful that we have that program and that we, Ellen's able to improve that.
It's great that we have three projects under construction right now. So it's really starting to happen right now. Spring is gonna be a good time.
Any other questions? And I will entertain a motion to approve the February 17th, 2022 regular accounts payable.
Second.
Questions or comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call roll, please?
Ms. Soder?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Coles? Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Paulsstein, hi.
Hi.
Wish you success.
Okay, Village Board Committee reports. Mr. Kelly, do you have anything from the BBC?
Uh, I was not able to attend the previous BBC meeting. Mr. Hedges, were you able to attend or? Uh, Mr. Ray, I know you did a presentation if you'd love to share what happened at the BBC meeting.
Sure, so most of the time was spent talking about a new economic development strategy that staff approached BBC and asked them to start working on kind of high-level mission goals, uh, strategies they would like to see in order to help, uh, the staff then, you know, evaluate businesses that are potentially coming to town and see where they might, uh, might want to go in town as far as up by the interchange, you know, down on commercial strips on 72. So just big picture, things like that. And the BBC got started talking about their mission statement and their goals for economic development of the village. And they'll be continuing that process over the course of the next several meetings. Uh, Commissioner Swallow also gave an update on the facade program. Uh, we expect to have a couple of applicants right away in the spring if that program continues to be funded. That's all I remember from the meeting.
I do, I do want to thank, uh, Mr. Ray, who has been instrumental in guiding the BBC through this process of what an economic development, commissioner or committee can focus on and taking a lot of his knowledge and sharing it and, uh, being an active part of that. So thank you very much for being a part of it. It's been, from the updates that I've read and what's been happening, it's been phenomenal. So thank you.
Okay, public relations.
Do you have a question for BBC?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
When, when, when they come forward with the facade programs, do you guys, uh, see your, uh, color rendering of what they're gonna do and talk about it?
Yeah, so.
Because like the new one that they just put in looks fantastic. Looks brand new. You've got all this old stuff. You got one brand new one. I was just wondering if.
Yeah, so the process is, as I understand it, I've been involved a little bit, is that it goes to the beautification committee first. The beautification committee will then take a look at the plans. They ask for the rendering. They ask for the drawings. What's gonna be done, the bill of materials, the quotes. And part of what they take into consideration is the overall looking feel of downtown. Then if they approve for it to go to the BBC, it then comes to the BBC for consideration. And in that packet, they do, like, uh, renderings of what, what they believe it will, will end up looking like. And, and I think to the best of their ability is what they do, but they do the, the list of here's all the improvements that'll be done now. My, my guess would be if a material becomes unavailable, they have to pick a different type of material, but it's the same work. That may change based on what it brought, or what the artist's rendering could have looked like. But in, uh, to answer your question, there, there is, I think, just, every one of them has had that.
Yeah, those same renderings come to the village board for about 10 minutes.
We did talk about in one of the meetings, and I don't remember if we talked about it in here, so I apologize, but we did talk about this idea of, do we, do we need to add a sense of like conformity to the downtown area where the improvements need to have a specific look and feel, similar to what other communities have? And the, the thought was, we've already kind of gone down a path with a lot of updates and upgrades without having something like that. And that, that approval process, after the BBC, it comes to the village board for, for actually, for final approval. That there are, there are enough checks and balances in place to make sure that we don't end up with something that's just like, oh, oh no, what did we approve to, to go downtown, right? But we don't have like that standard, standardized must look and feel in a specific manner. Uh, and I think it's because of the, the time that that program has been in existence. Without that, you end up with the salon looking one way, the old dollar store kind of look in a different way. It'd be hard to ask them to go.
It'd be hard to ask them to go back and change that.
There is some commonality, in fact, that the doctor's office, which is almost completed now, will have the same lights that are on the upper deck. It's a side, there's, there's ours and similarities.
Yeah.
And I think it'll be similar also in the house of the law.
But it does, I agree with you, it does look great, looks brand new.
Anytime they change a material, Bill Swallow goes over and they talk about it. Example, he just reported this week, they originally got the two windows upstairs, now they're putting a large picture window, so it looks more like an office. So those kind of things, you know, beautification can be really.
Yeah, and Bill does a, a pretty regular update report of here's, here's how the progress is going. They're either ready for it to be done, or if they're, as Mr. Hedges said, if there's a change, then he says, here's the, here's the change. But they talk to him before they make that change, because it's approved based on what, what was discussed. Thank you.
Any other questions about the BDC? Okay, public relations?
Our newsletter should be coming out before our next meeting, so thank you to Mr. Rosetti for getting that done for us. It'll be in your water bill coming out March first.
Around the first of March.
Around the first of March.
Works, over court. They're out there working tonight. They're doing a great job.
There you go. There they go. There it is.
Ms. Paul Stiney?
Yeah, we do have our first bunch of meeting then on February 23rd. Do not know what time it is, and I do not know what is on the agenda exactly, so if that could be shared tonight?
The timing, I was, I was.
Six thirty.
Yeah, pursuing six thirty, so yeah.
That's fine, I just didn't have it down.
What was the name again?
Two twenty-three, February 23rd.
And the agenda will have the minutes from the last meeting, hopefully. And then review of the operating statements or the operating funds this time.
Okay.
Okay, new business. Their announcements?
Yes.
Okay.
The Starfield Society is having their hot history and hot cider for Hampshire Fire, and it's on February 24th at seven o'clock PM over at the Hampshire Fire Department. Encourage you to go. We get about thirty-five, forty people regularly coming to this, and people are really anxious to hear about the history. So when we post this on the social media site, there's a lot of interest, and people are excited about it. So I think it's something that we should all kind of support to, to get other people to come to it, too, and it's very interesting to learn about. And then one other thing I just wanted to mention, and it's not really an announcement, but just something that I came across. Now, there's so much going on in this town, and I know sometimes when you put on social media, people are like, what's happening to this small-town feel? Look at all this stuff. We don't always have control over that. So, you know, I just encourage you as trustees and stuff and members here, just Google Hampshire, you know, property for sale or houses for sale. And when you do that, there is an enormous amount of land that is for sale throughout the town, along 73, you know, 72, Allen Road, you know, Big Timber. And it's really surprising to see that much space that is up. So I just thought it would be a good idea just for people to kind of see that and understand.